Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all for coming. It's now 1:43, the second of May 2016. We're gonna go ahead and start with this commissioner's court meeting. We have a warm present. Judge Long is the only one not present right now, but we're awaiting his arrival. Shelby, could you say a prayer, please?
Father, thanks for the state every day you give us. We ask that you give us guidance in what we're about to discuss, and we ask that you be with the county and everybody in our country, amen.
Want to, item number five, discuss specific issues and/or concerns from TCEQ site investigation conducted week of April 11, 2016. Guys, I think we've discussed most of this, we've been discussing this during all the commissioners' court meetings. And David's the only one, he missed with the one we discussed the other day, right Shelby? And it was basically the same discussion that we've been having over and over on these commissioners' courts meeting. Shelby, did you wanna say something on the issue?
I was here. It was Pete.
Okay, Pete, I'm sorry, it was Pete that was in there.
I may have not been here mentally, but I was here personally.
I'm sorry about that. Sorry about that. That was you, alright. Basically, we discussed everything that we've been discussing, Pete. When they got over there, we've had three or four of them coming over here, and I've been in contact with you for a while now, and they've been just, when I've been in there, one of them comes in there, tells me one thing, so I started doing it that way, their TCEQ. Another one comes in, changes it a little bit, so we changed a little bit. But this, this last girl that came in, the lady that came in, she, she kinda changed her mind, I mean, she said we needed a 30-foot cap, and I kept telling her 30 inches, and she kept, she said, "No, I know the difference." She was, "It's 30 foot." I said, "So you're talking about building a mountain?" She said, "Yes." And I said, "Okay." I asked her three or four times if she was sure. She said, "Yeah." And there's no way we can put a 30-foot cap up. There's no, I mean, we'll screw up all the houses around her and stuff. She said that what we had on the ground, we had to pick it up and not take it-
Do a what? Like a $300,000 fine, Shelby?
Something like that. And I told her, "Well," I said, "the other people from TCEQ knew that we were putting it on the ground, but we have the containers here, because we were only doing two on the bottom, two on the top." I go, "They knew that, and then we fill them in as we needed or whatever." I said, "But they didn't, they didn't complain about it." They said, "Well, they..." She said, "Well, they were wrong." And she has here for the names of the people, and I told her, "Here are the names," and I got kind of, not upset with her, but I debated with her, and I told her, "What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna drag all of y'all to commissioners' court, so y'all can go and present it to commissioners here, because y'all are all giving me different orders, different things that I have to follow, and I don't know which one to follow." So, you know, I'm mixed up. Basically, that's all it was, and I think that's what I called Shelby, and Shelby agreed to help, and Shelby's been involved with it back and forth in it too. But, basically, am I missing something?
Pretty much, yeah.
They told me, they told me that we could keep burning all these other, people said we could keep burning clean number, anything that wasn't official-treated, payment, anything like that, and we'd keep burning brush. They told Shelby, when he called up there, they told him that we could only burn on certain occasions.
The original permit says infrequent basis. And infrequent with the old, old permit basically said that if it was like a rain after, you know, everything was wet, you could burn it thin, but, and the wind had to be blowing away from any type of, any residences within proximity to the, to the, to the burn site, and the burn site had to be by 300 feet away from the, from the TV structure.
Also, Pete, it's kinda, it's kinda my fault, I guess this is happening too, because when I took it over about six, seven years ago, I think Jeffrey had it and then Dean had it, I just took it over and I just followed the same pattern we were doing. I shouldn't have looked back. Shelby looked back at the original agreement, and the original agreement states that nothing can be put on the ground. But since there was already stuff all over the ground, and we were burning there, I just followed suit. I shouldn't have. I did talk to TCEQ, and TCEQ was allowing me to do everything that we were doing, but I never looked back at the original contract. And now that we got the original contract, it states some of these things that we're doing, that TCEQ allowed me to do, that they're not in the original contract. I think the problem here is that people are changing, my fault to begin with, I shouldn't look back, but we're all, they're also changing people from TCEQ back and forth, and everybody that's been going over there has been giving me a different story, and I failed to look back on the contract.
Well, and, and the, the collection station should've been mon, it was, should've been operated by the statue that was established in 2000, March 27, 2006. And it's 330.213 of the Texas Commission of Urban Acquirement Municipal Solid Waste, Subchapter E, Operating Standards for Municipal Solid Waste Storage and Processing Units, and Rule 330.213, Citizens' Collection Stations, and that's what we have.
Yeah.
And it pretty much tells you, you know, that you can't put nothing on the ground, everything has to be in the containers, nothing to burn, you can take stuff from like a hotel, they wanna get rid of furniture or stuff like that, but any other trash that comes in has to be placed in bags. We just have to do a better job making sure the people there know, know the rules, and we have to have rules posted and a sign posted of ours operation, and exactly what we can and will accept and what we can't accept. And we can't take any type of oil, oil stuff, can't take any batteries, any petroleum-based products, asbestos, you can't take any type of appliances such as air conditioners, refrigerators, because there's a federal guideline you have to follow before you can take that.
So, basically, I think the only thing that me and Shelby talked about maybe taking is just household trash bags, unless y'all think that-
Well, you know, I mean, somebody at home has, say they're out there on the farm or at the house, and they're cleaning stuff up. The cities have municipal solid waste pickup twice a year. You know, they have one now in Corn City, I think, and Kenny's gonna have one, they may have one at the same time, which they take brush and everything else. Somebody, say you're cleaning out your farm, you got a bunch of wood, you don't, or you tear out some stuff, you throw some stuff away, we can probably take a lot of that. If it's loose trash, it has to be in bags. You gotta put it in bags. And, and they should, the brindges should be in bags.
But nothing on the ground, nothing on the ground.
We can't, we can't store nothing on the ground, it has to go from their vehicle directly into a container.
And no, no contract, no contractors.
No contractors.
We've been chasing them away right now to Victoria, San Antonio, I've been talking to them, so I need to go to Victoria, San Antonio.
And, and we need to set, make sure we have reasonable rates. Our only problem I see us having will be with, with brush. Right now, for every container, and I don't know if it's, if we need a, and Lil' One, he could maybe help me, we might need to put this out on bid again for containers to be moved, I don't know, 'cause it's over time, it'll be $50,000. And the contract we have in place now, it automatically renewed unless one of the parties would notify-
Within 30 days.
Within 30 days or 60 days of, "Hey, we're gonna, we need to renegotiate this thing."
I'm not sure that it ever was bid originally.
No, it's never been, that I know of, it's never been bid.
Well, what I'm saying is, it might be to our advantage to actually sit down and send out a proposal for, for-
Are you talking about just to clean up this situation?
No, 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 for, for the dumpsters to continue, because right now, $900 bucks a pop, every time they pull a dumpster, it's $900. So, right now, we've done, we've done two, we're doing four a day at $900, that's $3,600 a day. You're gonna send 26 out, and you got about 31, you got five more ready to go. So, you know, over time, that's gonna add up to a big chunk of money. Once we get that, that cleaned up, we can have a better focus on, okay, we got four dumpsters here, so we work with them, and they won't be coming every day.
Right.
But we need to make sure that when our dumpsters are full, to comply with the permit, that they be removed bi-weekly or, or whatever we do, you know, but we have to be in that compliance.
And we're just ballparking at about 50 or 60 are left, containers are left to pick up.
Well, I would think for any previous activity, or not previous, subsequent activity out there, that we need to go out for bids, because there's Waste Management, there's IESI, there's Progressive.
There's several in the area, and, and I don't know if they're all belong to the same guy, they just, like, wrecker services that change their names, and they all have five of them all in one group?
Right.
I don't know.
And you'll be able to tell that real easily on the bids that come in and how they're priced. But in this email that you have, Shelby, it says dumpsters will be removed on a weekly basis.
Well, but as long as we've got them bi-weekly, we'll be fine.
Even though this email says they're not, they're supposed to be moved on a weekly basis?
Well, if we don't have them full, he said, and they told me, they said there should be a maximum, they should be full, not just a deal.
Make him write it.
Yeah.
Because you're dealing with government bureaucrats, and I do not fault James, because I would've done the same thing. You don't take the son of a bitch's at their word, because bastards all lie. And what they think today is different tomorrow.
Well, and because you deal with multiple people, anything we have should be in writing.
That's right.
Period.
As long, every time I've dealt with any agency, I mean, there was from Railroad Commission to, to, anything to do before, we always, before we had time, any discussion with anybody, before they left, we asked for a written-
Yeah, document.
-to have something that we all, we're on the same page with, and none of us that he said, they said, she said, because people, when you're dealing with bureaucracy, you need to have something that's, you can refer to.
Well, and unfortunately, everybody interprets things differently.
Yeah, that's the number one cause.
That's, that was, yeah. If, if we go, let's see, I guess the first issue is, and probably I'm the only one that's in favor of this, but if the, the council, the court is in favor of keeping the landfill up, which I will add, I'm not, but if, if that's the way we're gonna go, then if we go by these one thing at a time with their concerns, the sign posting is not a, shouldn't be a big issue, just to get, identify what needs to be on the sign, and I would ask them for a copy of what they want on a sign. And because she's got blah, 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 et cetera, the et cetera will bite you in the butt. If she wants it on there, she needs to put it on there. And no other waste, other waste material other than bagged household being accepted at the time of the investigation, the facility was accepting brush, construction debris, tires, household waste. Okay, so, the sign would include that only bagged household materials could be accepted. Let's see, some material, waste material is being stored in three piles, okay, well, James is taking care of that. Waste materials are not being removed from the facility on a weekly basis. If we get an exception to that, as Shelby is saying, it should be in writing.
Well, your sign, you're talking about that there is a standard-
Standard sign.
Yeah, it says, you've gotta have a sign measuring four by four with letters, at least three inches in height, stating the facility name, the title of facility, hours and days of operation, the permit number, facility number if applicable, and facility rules.
Okay, but the rules are the ones that we're getting bit in the butt with.
Yeah.
So, you know, whatever she's put down here, I would suggest that she clarify to the nth degree, in other words, if, when she puts that et cetera, what else does she want in there?
I agree with you, so, if we get bit in the butt, we can always come back and say, "Well, you're the one that told us exactly what to put on the sign."
Yeah, I was gonna say, you need to identify what it is, and, you know, I understand what she's got here, and I understand that's probably the most of it, but what else might there be out there? If there was nothing else, it should've been a period there instead of et cetera.
Well, and besides that too, just because it's posted, which it definitely needs to be, it has to be enforced.
Yeah.
Can't be the buddy system where somebody comes out and allows somebody to bring stuff in and hide it in a dumpster.
That will have to be the court's action to police that if you have it such. I mean, if the court's going to, inadequate record-keeping. Need to keep records demonstrating the removal of waste from the facility.
Well, and that's simple to do, 'cause I checked into that, and all we need to do is have documentation of the, of the bill of lading that's hauled off the trash. That's all we, and we have those, but, but, and they're, they're in the, in the annex office, it'd be good to have, have a copy of them there, in a book, if you could say, "Here they are."
Well, they also should be signing off on those.
Yes, exactly.
Do you turn in regular reports to TCEQ?
Do I?
No. Do you turn in any reports to TCEQ?
No.
No, but now that- Just whenever they come out, they wanna look at your records.
Does that, James, or Shelby, when a truck picks up a dumpster, surely they make someone sign for it or something?
Of course, we have the records, and they're, they're, or the county pays for it, but it's not a record that we've ever kept onsite. But now, the commissioners' court is involved, the complete commissioners' court is involved, and not just one individual commissioner for the last 10, 12, 15 years. Now, the supervisor out there can come and present that to us, and he or she can let us know, and they would have adequate records over there, because they'll have a file.
All we have is, all they have to do is, all we have to do is a copy of the invoice, yeah, we, "Ex-dumpster was picked up by this guy, and he was taking it to this facility." That's all we need to do. We, we got rid of the dumpster, we need to take the dumpster and go dump it down the road. They want me to have a paper trail for where that dumpster was taken.
Well, and that could also be part of the monthly report that's given.
Yeah.
Two dumpsters on the second, seven dumpsters on the third, you know, whatever, and, but the, whatever you wanna call it, I'd call it a bill of lading, a copy is kept onsite-
Right.
-and then turned in with the report.
That's what I told Russell, that he has to, we're gonna, I'm sure we're gonna be asking, "How many came, how many rolled out, how many did they take?" I was, kinda, had a couple of meetings with him about that.
It's like we've taken that 26 to date, and there's five more loaded right now, ready to go.
Okay, well, that, and, so, that, that's reasonably simple, assuming the doc, the paperwork that the vendor provides us with has the information on it that it needs, that is where it's going, and some identification of the vehicle, the driver, all that, and probably it will.
Well, we need to make sure that we sign off on it, so it's acknowledged by the county that we are letting that leave our facility.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would think that before it goes, that the driver would have it signed, because most of the time, nobody gets paid unless something's signed.
You know what we probably need here is, I mean, I know we're talking about all this and everything, but we need to write something up, maybe 10, 15 different items, and give it to him or her, and get them to follow all of those rules.
Sure.
Like, like the adequate book, record-keeping, just to let them know, they go, "Well, yeah, one of the commissioners told me, the judge told me, but I didn't have nothing to write it for you." If we give them something that we write up, exactly what we're looking for, then he follows that.
Well, and then that can also be included when we go out for bids-
Yes.
...provided with the scope of the job.
And really, if you manage this right, it could end up being cheaper to manage it, to run it this other way, if you, than it is estimating $100,000 for, 'cause you're, you know, you've got like $100,000 in the budget for dumpsters now, but yet, if you manage the, you know, you decline some of this commercial stuff, you're gonna be saving on dumpsters going out.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you may find that the volume drops substantially-
A lot.
...when you do away with the light commercial and the, and brush.
Probably more than half.
Yeah.
Well, and then you also aren't gonna have the man-hours involved in-
Do what?
Unloading, and loading, and moving, and burning, and burying.
Tire dump, you can only, we'll have to, have to have a trailer sitting there to put tires into the, into the trailer automatically, and you come in, they don't have to tow them to the trailer. You can't have no more than 500 tires on the ground.
Or 2,000 in the trailer.
If, if you have a, where you-
If you want to stack some on the ground? Less, 500 or less.
Pretty much the same.
Yeah.
We weren't, we weren't putting them in the trailer, nobody wanted to put them in the trailer.
Once 5, 600, when we got on the ground, it was hard to pick them up.
Are you going to handle tires other than the county's own tires? I, I don't know what's hap-
As of right now, as of right now, sir, no, TCEQ doesn't want us to accept no tires. After their investigation, then they'll let us know if we can still take tires, but like, Paul said, then there's a manifest and-
Well, I mean, but that's-
But, but, when county picks up tires, we take them to the dump, we put them in the trailer.
Yeah.
And then any, everybody else has tires, we have those two hazardous cleanup a year, and we, we bring two trailers in, and we take, we collect those tires that day.
Okay.
And we've had a very, very good-
Response.
Yeah, very good response.
Well, I was gonna say, that's fine, I'm not saying don't do it, don't misunderstand me, I was just for clarification, as far as the documentation, generic, buy them at Walmart, blank bill of lading will manage that, all you have to put on it's where it came from, where it's going, you know, whatever information that these folks want, and whatever your, your accepting location wants.
Well, I'd probably pretty much guarantee you that each one of them have a laptop locked in their trucks that are hauling off those, and that's how they send it into the office.
Well, they go through, they, yeah, and also, they know if you load it too heavy, but they'll tell you.
The tires, countywide, though, are a problem, you need to be, you know, that needs to be something that you all think of, 'cause the people dump them on the roads all the time. I mean, I can tell you, if we're five are on our road right now, so if they don't have some place to take them, and they're not going to keep them for only one or two pickups a year, as you collect them only once or twice a year, which we're talking about, people just take them and dump them on the roads, and they're gonna do the same thing with the brush, so it's really something that people all need to think about. I mean, we've got furniture on the side of one of our county roads right now. I mean, it's just, it's a continual problem, I mean, we pick up wire, we pick up, you know, metal.
You're, yes ma'am, you're right, 'cause my donation to the Christian thrift people is to haul the trash furniture off that people dump on their place. The city of Kennedy won't take it, county can't take it, and so, we dispose of it in a controlled burn every once in a while, but we take it from the backside of one of the places and dump it off and burn it, and then whatever metal is in there, we'll throw in a scrap iron pile, but it's, what she's saying is right. Okay, we currently accept tires, do we charge a fee for accepting them?
Yeah, there's a fee for-
There's a fee for accepting.
That just, with the county, we're still allowing the county, like, to bring in any tires.
Well, I mean, us, but I mean, that's, but the, a citizen coming in-
As of right now, they can't, right now, until the investigation is over.
But, but if-
Because you'd be careful with that, because you're gonna get some of these tire guys that you pay to collect your tire, you know, when you change it, buy your tires, and these shops, and they will start, you know, "Here, here, here, one, I got six tires, can you take them over there for me? I paid you so much." And then if they know, we're being the tire-
I think that the problem being created with the tires on the road, tires here, tires anywhere, is people don't, nor do I, wanna pay to have them disposed of, so even if you accept tires, but you charge through $4 apiece, it's just as easy to head down the Halls Road and pitch them off beside the road, and a lot less expensive than to drive to Corn City with them, unfortunately.
Well, if you start to collecting tires, I'm, I'm-
I'm not saying-
No, 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 but I'm saying, you know, it's, you're gonna have to make sure you pay a, 'cause each time you got trailer, a tire trailer is usually $2,500 or $3,000.
Is what it costs. How many tires go in there?
You can put 800 in it.
Or it's no more than 2,000, depending on, you have truck tires, you've got car tires, the smaller the tires, the more you can pack in.
Okay.
Depends how you stack them.
Yeah, and also how you stack.
There's more than $3 a tire.
Nothing more than $3 a tire. Depending on how many you can haul in there. That's one about, about tires, you were following-
And Shannon, those tires on your road?
Been there a long time. In fact, it is-
On 113?
Yes, sir.
I have one 15.
Been there a long time. Of course, it's been a long time since anybody's been out there, but-
But, but as you comply with all the government regulations, and I listen to you talk, and you get this down to a household trash garbage, it sounds real good, and, and I'm not, I'm not condoning a dump or anything like that, but you need to logically think, as you, as you size this down to household garbage, these people are going to dispose of their items somehow, whether you accept them or not.
Right.
And sometimes, it just becomes the cost of doing business to provide these things.
Yeah, and, and I, I agree.
I mean, and it just, it needs to be a conversation, I mean, we can get it out, all you can bring is this right here, and it's, it's good for the county, but-
It's $3 a tire, which is what they charge in discount to take your tires, what if you all accept the tires for perhaps maybe a reduced rate, but at least gives them a place to take your tires.
But, it's like I was telling James earlier, we could have four dumpsters sitting there, and one dumpster could be just strictly dedicated to furniture, you know, any people bring their furniture, the furniture goes in the-
You've got some of that on one of them.
What do you do with that gotta be moved every week, well, Shelby?
Well, when you get, you crush that down in it till, till, when you get, every other bi-week, as soon as it gets full, you move.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just, I don't-
But, but there hasn't been that much furniture coming into that place, because, as you say, they dump it on the road.
Scott, I, I kinda debated with that TCEQ the day that we're there, she was, I think her name was Amanda, and we sat, I said, "What do you want us to do? We're accepting all this, because if not, we're gonna find it on the road." She was, "I understand," she goes, "But you're not a transfer station." I go, "I understand the difference between a collection and a transfer station." I go, "But if we don't accept it here, we got it out on the road, then we gotta pay maintenance people to go out there and pick it up, and we still gotta haul it over here, and we still gotta throw it, so it's better for us, even if we take a loss to get it here." She wouldn't hear it.
Well, you're, you're right, it's a catch point, too, that's what you're saying.
Again, so, some of these things, and I shouldn't probably say this, but out of sight, out of mind. You manage what you get in right away, you put it in the trailer, or you put it in the dumpster, don't build a, a monument of stuff that's sticking on the ground and draws attention to it.
I got you.
Well, and David and Robert, should, Dwayne, excuse me, should be brought into this conversation, to, you know, what kind of calls do they get on illegal dumping, and where's it at, and, and you need to take their calls into consideration and, and monitor it that way.
We had talked about the last time, put in those little game cameras like 10 years ago.
That was Carl Hummel's idea.
Yeah, I think, we, I knew it was like 10 years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while.
Okay, but I don't know-
But it's not bad, it's not bad at a, at a heavily dumped location.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think if we nail, nails the wrong, if we bust somebody, charge the crap out of them, catch one person, one person.
I thought about that, raise the fines to where they're prohibited to be.
Yeah, I mean, to where, it's like, I mean, it's really hard to pay, and just bust them. You know, I don't, I don't know, maybe get, hit five people, and then maybe the rest will learn. Some people won't even learn, some, some people won't learn. But no, we did with TCEQ, I had that argument, Scott, and I told them, "That's the reason, exactly what you're saying, let's just take it at a loss, then pick it up off the road." But TCEQ has here, they just put here, as of now, they haven't really cut us off from everything, but they have it here, at the time of investigation, the facility was accepting brush, blah, blah, they don't want us to accept the brush, construction, demolition, debris, tires, only household waste as of right now, until the, until the investigation is over, and then they'll let us know what we can take as a collection station. Now, we can become a transfer station, but we have to have more permits and stuff like that, and then we're gonna be watched more by TCEQ, but we can become a transfer station.
What I think is, you know, just gotta manage what you bring in there. Put it in the dumpsters, get rid of it, and get rid of it. If it's brush, it goes in the dumpsters, if it's, it just, some of it's gonna be just the nature of the beast, it is what it is. The tires, I don't have a problem with tires, 'cause we got those trailers, we could put them in a trailer, and soon we fill them up, bring us another one. Maybe generate enough to, to say, well, it doesn't matter how we do it, but the trailers, what you collect for the tires in the trailer, you could probably pay for the trailer, be like a break-in type thing. But, but they're not on the road, it's an avenue for a place to get them. I know that, that, what do you call it, that, with Conoco and that, and that-
Cleanup deal.
Steer, they take their tires, they pick up in Corners County, they take them to Quirrell, to their dump over there, and put them in a, in a, in a trailer. Uh, Wilson County, each commissioner, they've got one yard in, in, in Wilson County that they just bring to the commissioner, and he just puts it in his trailer. In Polk, that's where that trailer's at.
Goliad used to have one in every precinct, but I think they've done away with that.
That's how you do it.
We waited on any major decisions since you got here, sir.
Y'all can go on here.
We've had a discussion.
But it's a, you know, again, it's, it's just, we're gonna, how you gonna, what do you wanna be able to, to take, and make sure you manage what you take. We're collecting it, collect it, and put it out of sight where it's in a dumpster, and get it hauled out. So it's not on the ground where they come by and they look, and you see all these other, other signs that makes you wonder, well, what are y'all doing here?
What about the, what about the hole we got dumped that does? We have a, we paid a lot of money to get that site going, to burn brush and clean number, but now I know that Shelby said that it just, every once in a while, they're gonna let us burn. They had told me that the burn, the weekend we had to.
Do we have to do anything with it, James? Couldn't we just leave it in case it is needed?
Yeah, everything has a soak to it. The only thing is, because of the way it's, it's put there, I gotta put a berm on this side to retain the flowage of water that's gonna come, come in, and now it's gonna get filled up. Now, because the land grades this way like that toward, uh, the north, I can't cut a canal to, like, to drain it out, because then it's gonna drain with, with the debris, the ashes and stuff. We can't do that, because then we'll be living with something else. So it has to stay where it's at, but it's always gonna have, it's gonna be filled up to one side. And as we do a pump there, is that some kind of pump there that we can automatically turn it? And we gotta run electrical to it? Is it that, or Shelby had kinda mentioned, cover it up and be done with it?
I think we leave it off, because number nine says, no regular burning, or it says we can after storms and so forth. Well, then I have a technical, we have a whole lot of brush, so I, I think we should leave it if we can.
I, I, I agree with Pete. I think we spent the money on it. If, we may as well, I'd say tweak whatever else you need to do to finish it. Let it sit there, uh, after a storm, you know. And, and like I say, we've had a few winds. This morning looked like we might have a few limbs down. But, you know, catch a, catch a deal, a, a situation similar to that, and then announce that, you know, if, if, if that's what's intended, that people can bring the stuff in and burn it. I, I don't, the, uh, I left my other stuff in a different pickup, and I don't have that permit that was originally granted. I bet Shelby has a copy of it somewhere. What does it say about burning in that?
I thought we were just talking about putting brush in one of the dumpsters.
Well, the, the problem with, I was talking to Shelby the other day, the problem with the brush, or Pete, well. It's, uh, it's that you bring in two sixteen-foot bed trailers that are full of brush. They're gonna charge twenty bucks. You can't go over, you know, overcharging. Those two sixteen-foot bed trailers, three of them are gonna fill up that container. You're gonna pay, you're gonna get sixty dollars. I know we're not here trying to generate revenue.
But that's ridiculous.
Logically, you're gonna, you're gonna get a hundred bucks, and you're gonna pay a thousand. So we've gotta do, either not accept it, or burn it.
Yep.
You know, so me and Shelby kinda discussed it. We're, if we can't burn it there, then don't accept it.
Well, I mean, that's the other option.
But, you know, again, if you don't accept it, it's gonna be placed on county roads and stuff, or you give some people an area where they can tell them, hey, you can go burn over here, you know.
Well, most of the people in the county, they can burn it on their property.
Uh, your city, people that live in the cities are about the only exception.
And the, the ones inside the cities, again, usually have their annual two, two or three times your cleanup thing where they pick up brush and everything. They have a, they have a way they can pick up brush up, they call them, and make a, a reservation with the city managers or whoever, offices, and you do that.
Rungy.
Except for Rungy in Fall City.
I was gonna say, Rungy has had their twice-a-year track, brush, large item pickup deal, but they always generated way, way more stuff than that during those six months. And they had been burning, and, um, they got hammered with the same thing, but they had a complaint. They didn't just have somebody show up. One of the neighbors, uh, that is warring with the city complained about it. Same folks that came, visited here, said, oh, you can't be doing that on a regular basis, yada, yada, yada. And so, they've, the city in Rungy has now quit picking up any, uh, brush that's put out, except during those two pickups, so what's happening, you know.
And other, other, uh, citizen collection stations in other counties, I'm talking with, I think, Goliad and Victoria had one, uh, I mean, Calhoun County and another one, their issues that, they're throwing their brush in dumpsters too, because they can't, they're not allowed to burn.
We have one area that's one side that we can't ride, that's three hundred foot from any structure. It was agreed on, but it depends on TCQ. They may come back and just have us not do it, but we can't.
I, I suggested, if y'all are very adamant about burning, I suggest that two of y'all, other than me, go talk to TCQ, y'all get the same, same spiel what, what they told me. And so y'all will have, you may have other questions that you could talk with them, ask them about.
Sure.
But, but I, I, if everybody's gonna get involved in this thing, you need to get involved on the same page.
I got a better idea. Why don't you call them and tell them they can come make their presentation to Commissioner's Court?
That's what I told them. That's what I told them, man.
You need to get your butt here. We ain't gonna do it one or two at a time.
Don't, don't we provide an office for them, Shelby?
Yeah.
So we provide an office, the expensive county or the citizen.
Yeah.
For them to office here.
That's true.
I'd, I'd have them come and present.
They need to come do their due here, and.
Or we'll kick them out of the office.
I was gonna say, I, I don't like the son of a bitch to start out with.
That's right. We'll let you office, and you let us burn.
There you go.
Well, you're gonna have the issue too, of how long after an event is brush allowable to be deposited out there? You know, somebody may have fifty acres that was all solid trees, that they've gotta go out and clean all that up, and it's not gonna be within a week after the event before they get it to the site. How do you determine if that's one of your qualifications that it's assumed after an event?
That's why we probably need them here, but the problem is, which one are we gonna bring? Which one's gonna have the knowledge that we need to know? They're gonna change something, or we need to bring maybe two or three of them?
Well, I would think this person that's the section manager would have authority over the liaisons that go out in the field.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Where the, wherever the buck stops, that's who needs to come.
You wanna call Cameron? Well, I can call him, you or me. Shelby, tell him that he needs to come down here and meet us.
Ask him if he would, you know, we could put him on a court session, and.
I got him on speed dial.
That way we can go ahead, and he can come down here.
He can come to them next May meeting.
May tenth, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, that's right. This is the first week of the month.
Yes, yes.
Yes, Mr. Shelby, is Joe Ran, or Cameron?
Morning part, no, I didn't die yet.
Cameron or Joe?
Shelby did.
He's like last year, we had outside.
I thought you were black. I got one outside with my little leg short sleeve shirt. Went back in.
It was nice though, I like it.
Well, it's pleasant.
Yep.
Because it's gonna be an office, you know, we have to.
Judge, I think the wind blew your hair a little bit on the way in. Yeah. You're. What are you trying to look like Bernie Sanders? Oh goodness. If I had any to blow, it would've probably blown.
I was going to say that, but I couldn't have time.
Shelby, Shelby, can you or Cameron come to the office, and we can, and discuss dues and dumps, and why the, of the, uh, collection station? Call me back when you get the chance, Scott.
But that's, I think, if you get clarification, and I understand what you're saying. I under, fully understand that, and it's pretty obvious, it's not, this is gonna be a cost. It's not gonna be a net zero deal, and so.
It's the service you're providing.
That's right, and, and with Pete, for the time being, I wouldn't rush to judgment and close the pit. I'd wait to see what they have to say. If it does not create a hazard, a problem for them to remain open and not in use, I'd leave it open and not in use for those items described, the situation described in item nine, where, um, infrequent burning, blah, 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 you know, whenever we happen to have an event, and then, you know, we determine what to do. I, I'm, if you can get someone to reduce this, and, and they did a pretty good job here. You know, I mean, there, there's some things left out, but if they'll reduce it to, to what they want done, then it's a lot easier to comply, but I, I, I feel sorry for James, because like I said, I've run down that same rat trail with people like that, that, oh no, that person didn't have the authority to give you approval to do that.
And that's basically what they told me the other day.
Haven't we run into issues with the city before as to when we burn and when we don't burn?
Yeah. With the designing that Mr. Underbrand provided, or the service that he provided, when you're saying you don't know exactly how to put in the walls or the drainage, wouldn't that, for twenty-five thousand dollars, wouldn't that top's engineering design, shouldn't that be provided by his expertise, specialty environmental?
Yes, ma'am. I called him back. As soon as, as soon as it rained, and I seen it filling up with water, I called him up, I said, hey, man, we got, we got a ditch full of water here, man. I go, I mean, what do we do, man? And he said, you gotta build a berm on this side of it, James. I said, all right, man, I'm just letting you know, man, that we're full of water. He said, well, cut something on the other side. I can't. I said, because then we're gonna be draining, there's a creek right beside it. So it has to, it has to stay where it's at right there. But, yeah, I called him right away, and he said, just, he said, just build a berm all the way around here. And then I said, what do you want me to do? Do like a French drain, and spin, do a spillway toward the, toward the actual creek just there? And he said, yeah, do, do whatever you have to do to, uh, like, get it away from the hole. I said, okay. He said he was gonna come down, but he hasn't yet. But also, I haven't called him yet. But that one Commissioner's Court meeting that we had, he said, I'll be down there, Jim, I'm gonna do my best to be down there, and I'm gonna go out there, and I'm gonna show you what you have to do. I said, all right. But I haven't done anything there, because he hasn't came by, and I'm gonna be honest, I haven't called him, but he hasn't called me.
I really, I really think that where that hole is, in the long term, I think it's, it's in the, it's not a, it's in the wrong place. You can't go too much further over because of the distance, and I think they were hitting on the edge of it all trash, because they were picking up trash in that thing, like that.
Every word's a wrong with Shelby, if where that hole is right there, say the hole's right here. Everything around that sucker is trash. That's the only area. And right over where we're ramping up, I got it to where, we're gonna ramp up, and we're barely missing the old, the old trash. So it's, I mean, that's the oldest spot we have.
There's nothing left there?
No, there's, that's, we got lucky, we found that one. The only thing we got there.
Was this, did this belong to the city previously, or?
Yeah, yeah, back in the seventies.
All right, let's, this leaders at the time decided to take over somebody else's problem.
And we sold ours and then took theirs.
They closed it, Commissioner, in, uh, I think nineteen seventy-four.
It's on one of these timelines.
Is it, is it longer? Yeah. Seventy-four, seventy-seven, I'm not sure when it was originally closed.
Let's see, eight, December eighteenth, nineteen ninety, site was closed to accept waste. Uh, site complete, final cover, ninety-one central office, accepted this site into post-closure, ninety-eight post-closure, maintenance investigation done. And then we go on to, I guess, when the county was.
County took it over two thousand seven.
Something was with seventy-four to seventy-seven, I can't remember. Maybe that's when it opened.
Might could've been.
I'm thinking of when it opened. My apologies.
Thank you, Davis.
That's where we're at, so y'all are saying, don't push closing right until we ask him?
I'd, I'd, I'd get them to come, um, speak to us and then make, have them. Personally, I would suggest that they commit everything they want done very specifically to writing, and then determine whether you wanna close it or not. But I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't rush to judgment and close it until that time. Do you, what do you?
Actually, I didn't know why we couldn't have, just, without even digging a hole, just get a bunch of, you know, pile, make a berm.
A berm around it.
Burn around everything, and throw everything in that berm, and, you know, make sure you weren't on nothing old, and just burn, and then you'd be done. I don't know why the hole came into, to the game.
I guess, to, because if we were to just build on top, the berm mentioned, it'll have, the water will find its way out and go into the creek. When the hole, it'll retain it, though.
Stormwater runoff that they talk about in here.
Now, basically, then, we're gonna bring them over here, so we're gonna have to make a list of what we wanna, the dues and don'ts, what we can do, right?
Yeah.
And basically, I know we've got.
Pretty much asking.
I've gotten a lot of good information today that we can.
I mean, I, I'm, a lot of times when you get to the fellow in the corner office, you get the answers that you need, and you can go on down the road, and it, you take the office politics out of it, and the push and pull, a whole. The other thing that we might want to look at, uh, is the court might want to look at, and that is our contract with Waste Management. I, I don't have a axe to grind with Waste Management, don't misunderstand me. But if, if this is going to be a over fifty thousand dollar thing, we should look at our contract and see when we can legally offer it for bids, if we have, if we're obligated to go another year, or.
Well, and once it's cleaned up, it may not be over a fifty thousand dollar a deal year cost, but it still wouldn't hurt to go out for bids.
That's right. I mean, I think the same thing, because we've got, like you say, there's Republic, and there's EISI or whatever, and Waste Management, and I don't know, there's at least probably a half a dozen people that might have.
But the issue, one of the issues we gotta talk about already is, one is that you wanna run that thing to hours of operation. Is it gonna be a four-day week or a five-day week? Is that guy gonna park his pickup? Are we going to, uh, what else I think about over there? Uh, we gotta fix that, that, James, the, uh, the compactor, because it evidently, it shocks somebody when you use it or something.
They were supposed to come look at.
Nobody has come to look at it yet.
I've called, Russell's been calling, they keep setting up appointments with both of us, they don't come in. It's already been three, four, five times.
Well, that's another reason.
Excuse me. Did, did, have we had Kirby or somebody go out there and look at it? Don't mess with it.
Don't even mess with it. So the only time we use it is, we let the public go ahead and dump in there, and then when they leave, we turn it on, and we smash it, because when it's not raining. Because it doesn't shock if it's not wet. But it's old, we need another one.
Okay. Well, I mean, that's, that's the things that need to be considered too, and I'm sorry.
No, but you're, that's what I'm trying to say is.
That compactor was acquired with grant funds, and we never utilized it like it was supposed to be utilized. There's a building full of recycling bins out there that were supposed to be distributed, but never were distributed. When this whole project was first started, we got a grant through ACOG for all that stuff.
Where are the bins?
The bins are in one of those eighteen wheeler truck boxes. I went ahead and I distributed them, me and my kids, well, my kids are younger now, they're all grown up. But that's how long they've been there. We went to every school, we went to the city halls, we went to the hospital, we went to everywhere. I sent my kids, my two teenage kids, and, and some of my company trucks, they went out there, they gave everybody. I explained the rules, gave them paperwork, everything. Went back two weeks or a month later, they had books in them, they had stuff in them. Nobody, nobody did nothing with them, so I left the rest of the bins in there. We got, I wanna say it was ten thousand dollars worth of bins in there, and we got so many, so we could keep sending it to them. Nobody recycled, nobody wanted to recycle. I told them, you know, you gotta do plastics, you could do paper, and then we'll come back once a month or whatever and do it. When we went back to check, nobody did it, so that's why I just realized, and that was everybody, the hospital, the other cities, nobody did. City halls, and nobody did.
The city here in Carin City had a, a recycle thing up at the city yard for a long time, that, you know, you could put glass and what have you, and it, it was at the, it was a roll-off, but it had cubby holes or compartments, because the only reason I happened to know about it was when we cleaned out the offices over at Morris Oil Company. I took all the paper over there as we went through it to kind of verify that it was not of any great value, and I, I filled the paper compartment up on a couple of those, but they were very poorly used. I mean, most people didn't bother to mess with it.
Well, most people that live in the city limits anyway, that have trash service, aren't gonna take the extra time to sort it out, and they're already paying for trash service.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's the problem that we had. And what happened that time was, we needed to get, we had some, there was some money in there, right? And I was talking with, I forget her name, because I don't talk with her every day.
Georgia.
Georgia.
Samaria.
And I said, she said, well, we got about ten thousand dollars. I said, well, what can we do? You know, work, what, what, she said, what about containers? I said, hey, it sounds like a good idea. And me and her met, and she said, all you gotta do is take it to everyone. So I did my job all there, but nobody wanted to, nobody wanted to. Just like the grant that we were gonna get this year, I talked to Shelby about the grant that we could've got this year, but Georgia said, it has to be something to do with collection, because it's a collection station. We're not collecting anything anymore, so we couldn't apply for the grant. Because if we're gonna build a ramp, that's for, that's for the citizens, it's not to collect, we're not, it's not, we're not recycling. It has to be something to do with recycling, and we're not recycling, so we couldn't apply for the grant in any way.
Yeah, well, the, the commodity prices are so low now that the cities who demand recycling, like Austin, and some of those up there having trouble because the contractors, it, it, they can't get rid of the stuff. I mean, it's, it's, it's a loss leader. I mean, it's not even coming close to anything, anyway.
But we are, we do have those, uh, compactors there, the plastics for the cardboard. I think those were fifteen thousand dollars, we got those with grants. We got mostly everything with grants out there right now, like the buildings and all that. I think one, one year we worked with Georgia, got twenty-five thousand, and another time, we've been, and then Jeff worked with her getting. So we've gotten a lot of grants there before, but now Georgia said that if we're gonna get a grant, it has to do with recycling, and we're not recycling anything out there.
What, um, this is a, a jump, but what, and I haven't driven by lately, a long time. What's happened with the dog pound? Is it still there?
Excuse me, Commissioner.
No, that's fine.
I have to meet defenseman down at jail at two thirty, I've got a few things to do.
Have fun.
Thank you all.
Make, make sure, make sure we get our permit appro, I mean, our jail approved.
Thank you.
But, uh, the dog pound is still kind of sitting there.
The city is, is it, don't they?
Yes.
Who does, city?
They deal with just dogs, no cats or anything. Yes. Oh, another, uh, Shelby brought up. Oh, another, uh, Shelby brought up, and that's what we, I've written on here too, about the days, the days of operation. I know the other things we have to ask T C Q, but the days of operation, the truck usage and all that, that, we don't have to ask him. That's something that we can do here within this court. Uh, the days of operation, do I wanna do, it's always ran fourteen, but we can flip it to five eights. We're running a five eight right now, Judge, that way we can take care of, and we can have them there every day.
Well, it needs to be one weekend.
A Saturday.
Yeah, would be better.
Y'all wanna do it the same way we're doing it, Tuesday through Saturday?
I run it Monday through Friday. You got that part-time guy, right? He can work, make sure that part-time day is his Saturday.
We have to give, then we're gonna be open from, right now we're open, uh, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then Saturdays, three days. So we run it.
What do we do the rest of the time?
Clean up, cut grass, the same thing, we've been doing the different things, grease up a quick man, just.
Yeah, but if everything's going into dumpsters, you don't have stuff to clean up.
Right. There's gonna be a lot of different, there's not gonna be that much to do there.
It could just be.
It's kinda like, it's kinda like a parade of people coming in there every day. While they're there, they could be doing other things, you know? The day especially when there's two guys there, one could be cutting grass or whatever, but, uh.
If after we clean, get it cleaned up, Shelby, what about, you wanna do it maybe Monday through Friday, eight hours a day? Part-timer on Saturday, part-timer only on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And then on Monday, Wednesdays and Fridays, just have the gentleman that's there right now, have him just sitting at the office and doing what he has to do on Tuesdays and Thursdays. When we have the part-timer there, if grass has to be mowed or something else has to do, that's when one of them can go take care of the extra stuff they gotta do. And then we have the part-timer four hours on Saturday.
Is it really busy enough to be open eight hours a day, five days a week?
Probably not. Probably not busy enough to, but like.
I mean, I would think your busy days are going to be Friday, Saturday, Monday. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I wouldn't think they're gonna be that busy.
Very.
Since it's not.
It, it's. I'm sorry, taking, doing the way we're gonna do it now with mostly household until the investigation's done, I don't know how, what's gonna be busy. Before, it could've been busy one day, one day not, because it's business. But now with this household, I don't know, I, we've never ran it just like this, so.
I saw when Jesse was there, that's all he was open, was Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday. When Jesse Jonas was there, that's all he did was Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday.
When it was part-time. And then we made it full, then we made it a full-time position, and then, uh, we got him a helper in there.
Well, that, that full-time position came into effect, I think, when we were taking wood group and agavies.
Bingo.
Construction, uh, commercial materials. We're not gonna do that anymore, because that's not what our permit is.
No.
Yeah, I just think it's a waste of my money, taxpayers' money, whomever, that we're open five days a week and people aren't there. You don't have traffic to warrant eight hour a day, five days a week. I mean, if you post the hours out there, people are gonna get used to it.
Was, was Jonas there all day on Saturday, half a day, do you know?
I think he was there till like two, like eight to two or something. Uh, was it eight to two, eight to twelve, something? It wasn't all day, but it was, it was eight to two, I think.
Eight to, something, that would be six hours.
Now, we could, Shelby, we need to, we can try it at five eights and then see what we're doing. Because if somebody wants to throw trash on Monday and we're closed, they're gonna throw it all in the camera room.
No, they're not, they'll wait, James, they're not gonna do that. They'll wait. If they know.
As long as you're posted.
If you post it, they're gonna wait. I don't think they're just gonna toss it and not wait one day. I mean, they buy, but.
Somebody like me or you.
Yeah, well, I know, but you gotta give them some credit somewhere.
Cause there's trash all over those county roads, so it has to be, there's different people.
If there's trash on the county roads and they're open five days now, then it does, if you're saying.
Three days now, but you know what I'm saying?
I know, I know.
I don't know if that would be a reason that it's gonna be more trash on the roads. There, there's always gonna be hoodens, there, no matter what, there's always gonna be.
Well, you know, if you wanna run it Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Saturday, what are you gonna do if the guy on Tuesday, Thursday, send him a road bridge?
The part-timer?
No, the full-time.
Okay, if you, if you ran it with a full-time person, forget about anybody being there on Monday. Ten hours on Tuesday, seven on Wednesday, ten on Thursday. That leaves them till six in the evening, to where if anybody wants to come late after work, they could come. Seven on Friday and six on Saturday gives you forty hours for the week. That's just a thought.
That's a good thought, because it's after hours.
I mean, because most, if you're accepting residential trash, there's, you know, most people not gonna get off till five o'clock, so chances are. And then again, that's one of those try it and sees, it may not, may not be feasible either.
Cause if we go down, just say for example, if we go down to one full-timer there and get rid of the part-timer.
Yeah.
He can't be open five days a week, cause who's gonna mow the grass? So this would give people coming, there's, there's other things to do there, greasy and mowing.
Well, if, if, if he's open Tuesday, Thursday and Saturday and works seven hours on Wednesday and Friday, he's got maintenance time of about fourteen hours a week.
Yeah, as long as it's closed, then he can do the maintenance.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. If you work from eight until six Tuesday.
Open.
Open. Thursday, eight until six.
Close.
Open on Thursday and open on Saturday from eight until two. Unless I misadded, that's twenty-six hours. And, um, then if you, if he, that leaves you fourteen hours. Okay, if he was open any seven, not open, excuse me, working any seven hours on Wednesday and Friday. And, you know, it, that would give you his forty hours. Now, he'd have Sunday and Monday off, he would not work at all on Sunday or Monday.
See, I think it'd be more beneficial to be open on Mondays.
And be open on Monday.
People clean out on weekends and things like that.
Okay.
Now, we're in, it's into budget right now for the.
Part-time.
Gentleman that's there right now and a part-timer. I don't know, do you wanna keep running it and then, I'll tell him it's going to see how much we get in, how many, how much work there is now?
I still say run it five days a week, eight hours a day, but yet you could only accept trash three of those days. And two days would be eight hours of cutting grass and whatever. Would, would, entitle those two days to be with the, with the, uh, uh, part-time guy. And the part-time guy can run it on Saturdays till one o'clock.
That, that's, you know, I don't have an issue with that unless the part-time fellow's there, but.
I'm saying, cause everybody except for fire, A M S and sheriff are on eight-hour days.
I'm taking a quantum leap here that when we get to budget, that the part-time fellow might go away because we're looking at tight money.
And then, and then if you do that, you still run it five days a week, but Tuesdays and Thursdays would be the day that he would actually have to do maintenance.
Yeah, and the part-timer's there to pick up.
If it's a part-timer, wouldn't be that.
He can take care of everything.
If he's cutting his grass and whatever, you would accept trash on two days of the week. But Monday and Friday, you would be accepting trash, and Wednesday.
But every week you aren't gonna be cutting grass.
No, but, uh, I'm sure that you'd be, there's something, there's always something to do out there if you look. But what are you gonna do with him when two days he's not there, that you don't accept trash?
Well, maybe that should be a part-time position. If we're only open part-time, why do we make it into a full-time position? If we're only accepting debris or trash, part-time hours, why does it need to be open forty hours?
Now, if we start burning, or if they allow us to burn, if we still have the pit there, then it would be safe to say that we may need the part-timer, I'm just kidding. We may need the part-timer because on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and we had originally said, work at eight hours a day, but at the part-time on Tuesday, Thursday and Saturdays, all those Tuesdays and Thursdays, if they let us burn the way we were burning, uh, we could go ahead and we could, we could put all of that there and still burn on maybe one of those days. And one day he could grease, mow or sheet, could grease, mow or whatever, and the other day they could actually burn. And be watching over, cause they gotta start burning early in the morning. I, I, I don't, my, I, my idea, guys, this is just my idea. Is, I know that we're talking, we're discussing it, but that's what we are here discussing it. But until all of this is done.
It's a little difficult.
It's a little bit difficult to know what we have and how many people are gonna be coming in. Cause if we try to open five days a week, it's open five days a week and watch it. You just watch it over for a month, let's see how many people come in, and we'll know if we need it or not. Cause if we, they say we pull the part-time right now, what's the other gentleman gonna do over there as of right now?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, like I say, I wouldn't do anything this minute, I, this is a, even maybe for next budget year.
That's another way of looking at it too. And then if we don't need it, that'll give us sufficient time to see what's coming in and what's going out. And then we might not need a, we might not even need a full-time.
For the near term, you've got all this stuff to move that's piled up. So how long will it take to complete that, more or less?
Probably a couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks.
If we're got, we already got twenty-six out of five that owed it, thirty-one, there's maybe fifty to sixty in a couple of weeks.
You need to have at least one full-time and one part-time.
Okay.
I think, I would just.
Well, again, if you, if you, this makes, now that won't work, cause that only gives the fellow one day a week off. Uh, never mind.
There's, there's gotta be a way you can figure out how many, how many loads, how many people a day they come in with, I mean. If anybody talks to people that work out there, but when more people come than other. They get, you know, some days out there. Everybody talks to.
All you'd have to do is look at their receipt book and the dates on the receipts, see how many receipts are written each day.
Be a clue.
Someday, someday, Judge, I've asked Russell before, the gentleman that's out there, and I'll tell him, how many people have came in? And he goes, he goes, James, he goes, uh, two people come in. Some days there might be ten people, but, so it just, I, we don't know, it just depends.
Saturday's a big day.
Yeah, Saturday, you know, there's a few more people. That's kind of when the farm, the farm bird.
That's, that's why I agree with the judge, that, you know, somehow or the other, need, at some point, if it's not this minute, but at some point, it needs to, you need to have a Saturday availability of some sort.
Even if it was every other week, at least have some Saturdays available for people. Not everyone can do their, their dumping on Monday through Friday.
And another thing that we gotta write down too on the, on the sign, the thing is that if it closes, I'm just gonna use it for an example. It closes at five, right? Or four-thirty.
Yeah.
Somebody will come in five minutes till four-thirty, and they'll go, hey, it's still open. And they make that person stay there for an extra half an hour, an hour waiting. So it needs to be on the sign, something, well, last person coming in will be at four o'clock, thirty minutes before, to give them a chance to throw the stuff. Because they come in five minutes before, and there've been times that I'm running it out there, and like, I haven't, I don't mind.
And they load stuff so heavy that that, then they expect you to, well, aren't you gonna load my truck? No.
I told Russell a long time ago to quit doing that for the people. But he goes over there and he helps them unload everything. I said, "They know how they load it, let them unload it." And Russell will go out there, still will try to help the people. And I said, "If it's an older gentleman or a lady, I understand that." I go, "But there's some guys out there, I mean, you know, they're, you know what I mean, they're, they can get it off themselves, they know what they put on there." Thing is that they, sometimes they'll put it in with their, with their loader or something, and then it weighs a hundred pounds. And then Russell has to go over to tie it up, take it up, throw it in there, so it's just not.
You mean, when I take the stuff and load it in and take a front end loader and tamp it down?
Then they want their containers back.
Yeah. Um, well, out of all of this, whenever we make a sign, we need to construct it or have it constructed in such a manner that we can change the numbers on the times real, really.
Well, maybe, yeah, maybe a section of it, maybe we can like, put something under it.
Because, like I say, what I see based on what James is saying and what the desires are, that it, there's gonna have to be some adjustment, so. And this is the least end of our problem, but, uh, as, whenever we do set, make a sign, it, it needs to be something that can be adjusted, because chances are, it's gonna be adjusted at some point in time, based on our receipts, so.
How about if we do a split sign, like a three-split sign? The main rules here and then a little, another foot for the hours and then some, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then we can just take one out and slip another one in, so we do, we do a four-by-four, but split.
Yeah, that's.
Something we know that's not gonna change.
Yeah, cause I was gonna say, cause that, uh, what I see is this is a, um, trying to think of the commonly used term. Anyway, it's, we're in progress of, in the process of figuring out. A work in progress is the word I was thinking about, the words that we're gonna find out what's actually going to fit and work over a period of time. And perhaps with Russell, um, he might, and, and I'm not trying to load his boat, but he might give us a kind of like the sheriff does, how many prisoners he's got each day, and he could just take a calendar. He doesn't have to be anything specific, just a calendar page and write, you know, four, eight, ten, whatever on the calendar. Make a copy of it, bring it in, and maybe over a period of time, we can get some sense of direction of what it is.
You know anybody around in our area that runs a collection station?
Me?
You?
Not personally.
Do you? I mean, you.
I think Goldie, I think you can go to a county mine, I don't know. I know somebody that way does Calhoun, I think, maybe, they, they were complaining about having the same issues we have.
I don't have any issues, Shelby, this is.
Shelby, yeah, we went, okay, oh, the days, I'm sorry, I wanted to, uh, I wanted to, wanna get it straight. So what are we doing right now? Five eights and on Saturday, keeping the part-timer?
Yeah.
Okay, so Shelby, you wanna, we tell Russell that he's gonna be open five days a week, or does this apply after we clean up? Because if, he can't be open on Monday, Wednesday and Friday, he's up in the back cleaning.
Yeah, that's just running like we're doing, let them work eight hours a day, but clean up, working, clean it, do everything cleaned up. Once you have it cleaned up, picked up, then we'll set the, the days.
We, we really need to.
But the truck can be parked.
Yes, okay, so the truck, the truck's gonna be parked here, it's best, just gonna stay in here in the yard, that's what he's gonna use it for, okay? Now, we got, we got the truck situation down with the hours until he cleans up, then we'll revisit this and figure out what we're gonna do with the hours?
Yeah.
I think that's best, because, you know, like you said, we, we should be finished in two weeks, but maybe we'll be blessed with some rain, and maybe three weeks.
Guys, there's another, there's another thing we can look at, and I know that we're coming up to a tight budget. By no means am I saying anything, just something else that we're gonna look at, if his responsibilities grow, uh, we might be able to look at, uh, comparing him and his duties to another manager or operator or supervisor. Later on down the line, before the new budget year. Just something that we can look at further on.
You know, something else we need to look at for the upcoming time is that, budget is that. One is that we need, all that equipment out there needs to be serviced somehow. And we need to get, where Roden Bridge, work with them for them to come out there and take care of that. As well as anything with that vehicle that needs to be repaired, let them call Roden Bridge and say, hey, I've got a truck, my truck is, this truck is doing this. Can y'all coordinate something and?
We try that a lot, Shelby, but they're so busy that, I mean, and I understand they're real busy, but, and I'm sure they don't do it intentionally, and by no means am I saying anything, but we always get put on the back burner and we end up waiting and having a piece of equipment parked for two or three weeks.
I think, I think I've talked with Dale, I think he's willing to work with us. I think that might've been another issue that we'll just be putting back, but, but he even, we had a discussion about this, and he even agreed, he says, "Why don't they contact Roden Bridge, we could do more to help as."
That's a group, yeah.
Yeah, it's a group.
We, we have been, you can ask Russell, we make, we call him and everything, I mean, I've called Mike and everything. I know he's, I understand they're very busy. But since we have a budget and a budget there for repairs, I guess they feel that we can pay for it, but some of these repairs are minor that they can do.
Yeah, but you still charge them back to them.
If you wanna talk to Dale about that, get a little bit more and sync with that, and you've already talked to Cameron about trying to get him out here. Okay, well, we're in check for that, and, uh, so the truck goes away. The hours stay the same as we're doing it right now?
Yeah, till we get everything picked up.
Till we got everything cleaned up? Okay, guys, now, we're gonna go over fifty thousand dollars with this cleanup, but it's already in there. Do we have to go out for bids, or do we just keep on going the way we're doing? Cause I guarantee we're gonna go over fifty thousand bucks.
Well, yeah, because.
Yeah, but we can't shut it down for the three-week period to go out for bids.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we're just gonna keep, I just wanna make sure we're not doing anything wrong. We're just gonna keep going, right?
Because we've been cited, I mean, we've been put on notice of being cited if we don't get it cleaned up. We don't have the opportunity to wait twenty-one days to bid and set the seven bid open.
That's the way I feel, I just wanna get the whole consent of the court.
I think we need.
Well, you know, y'all were talking about just now, repairs and maintenance and all going through Roden Bridge and contacting them for their assistance. What if this becomes a division of Roden Bridge?
Oh, that's the same thing.
That person can work for Roden Bridge on the off days.
That's kinda where I was, that's where I was kinda going with all this.
Well, but then it's got, there's a supervisor.
Oh.
You've got Roden Bridge supervisor who maintains it as a, as a subdivision of Roden Bridge. And then he, that's an employee, those are employees of Roden Bridge.
You know what, that is a good idea, because Roden Bridge brings us the majority of the tires, the brush, everything. The trailer's gonna be going through Roden Bridge, and maintenance is gonna be going through the Roden Bridge of the heavy equipment. So basically, a lot of the part of it's already gonna be filtered through there anyways.
The, the only thing that can't rotate staff because of the money situation out there. We have to be sure whomever is out there collecting, receiving money, knows how to do the receipting, knows how to bring it in for deposit, et cetera, et cetera. It can't just be, you know.
Whoever wants to work there that.
Right. "I want an easy job."
Oh, I got you, so basically, the gentleman that's there right now stays there.
Right.
He's gonna, he's gonna have to know.
But his supervisor would be Dale.
Yeah, he'd report to Dale.
And then if it goes down where it's a, not open forty hours a week, or forty-six hours a week, or whatever, then if it's just open like three days a week, then the other remaining hours, that individual works for Roden Bridge.
So then, do we, do we put it under his, or what?
Well, that's what you're discussing.
That's what I'm saying, what do you think, Shelby, so we put it under his?
You could make it beginning the new budget year, but you could make that.
Until we're finished here.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good idea.
New budget year would be a good thing to come, yeah, I'm glad you thought that too. About forty-two thousand, forty-seven thousand dollars, if, based on fourteen hundred and eleven tons, uh, yards of material that they, they thought they had stored there, at nine hundred dollars, I figured nine hundred dollars, well, you're looking at about forty-seven thousand dollars. That ain't counting the machine running either.
Shelby, if, just say for an example, if we're gonna, if we're gonna pass it to Dale at the new budget year, then he has to have a say so on the budget.
Oh, yeah.
Know that we're gonna pass it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I've.
We can't leave the budget.
And I think next time you have another budget meeting with him, you might discuss that with him, but, but I think that's, that we're on the right track here, because that way, we're still utilizing, he's, he's missing, well, he wants to hire two or three people eventually, I guess, cuz they're gone, or whatever, but if we have him two days a week, that he could get this guy, or three days a week, whatever the case would be, you know, uh, it'd be to his advantage and ours too, and yet we're still maintaining a, a, a body.
And again, if you post the hours, people are gonna get accustomed to, these are the days I can go.
And put it in the paper where it's actually out there.
Even like every three months, put a little blurb in the paper, don't forget the hours are.
On the website.
And it's on the website, and signs are posted.
That's, that's the big question with anybody now, is, when is the dump open? Well.
And, and you give them, and you give them better guidance, what they can accept, and, and will take, and how to manage it, and not just, well, I just throw it over there, it, it'll, I think, once we get the dumpsters set up, it'll run a lot smoother.
And a lot of people that do.
It might run cheaper.
A lot of people that go out there and throw the trash, uh, their own folks and stuff, they probably don't know how to use the computers and all, even if it was on the website, they wouldn't know how, but.
But they read the paper.
But the paper, yeah.
You know what? And you can make a bunch of flyers.
It's not that much.
You can make a bunch of flyers, when they get there, when they pay for the deal, we give them their receipt, give them that flyer, say, here.
We could even hand them out when they come in and pay taxes and stuff at the tax office, just give them a free flyer.
It could be posted in every office.
Every year.
Every office, and we could pass a bunch out at the food distribution.
The same way, the same way we did that time with like the county roads, to sign up, to center flyers, the taxes, everybody gets.
There's ways to do, once we're getting cleaned up, then we need to get our.
And that's why you have all this time between now and October one, before the new budget year starts, and then you start fresh, cuz the whole point that we talked about was, remember, these standalone departments was getting them up under somebody to supervise.
I'm giving mine to away.
Exactly.
That's right, to Dale.
But, but the, the key is gonna be posting hours.
Yeah.
The hours of operation.
Yeah. Tell me, James, and I, this ain't picky, but, but what is, what is the gentleman out there making? I remember we adjusted his pay.
Thirty-two, thirty-three thousand, fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. That's what he's making as of right now.
I, I didn't write it down, I had.
He, he was ma, uh, thirty-three thousand.
He was making.
Fifty-two dollars and fifty cents, that's what he's making right now, the year before, he was making thirty thousand, some, I can't.
You had asked last year that he be paid the same as the chief deputies, because he was not an official, but he was doing the same duty, and so you had asked that he be raised to the chief deputy's salary.
Exactly.
And that's what he is.
Fifteen ninety-eight an hour roughly, sixteen dollars.
Yep, it's fifteen eighty-nine an hour, yeah, right roughly.
Thirty-three, how much, James?
Thirty-three thousand, fifty-two dollars and fifty cents, it's what he's giving.
That, that's fine, I, I, I remember we deviated, but I didn't remember exactly what it was, that's fine.
And that was with the one point seven cola, right?
Yes.
If you remove that, then it comes down to.
Thirty-two something.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-one dollars and two cents, some, give or take.
That's fine.
So then, since me and Shelby already had had him on five days, we just keep him like that, we don't have to make a decision on anything else?
I think y'all pretty much decided to leave him like that until, until the new budget year, get it cleaned up, just don't make any changes yet, but then.
Only thing, if the truck goes away.
We'll go talk with him today.
Yeah, but that, that would, yeah, I think that's the wisest thing, is, we're two-thirds of the way.
Or they open on Saturday now.
Yes, sir, yes.
Till noon?
Till noon.
Till noon. And, and we just, like you say, continue status quo, uh, tell, tell Dale, you know, we can tell Dale what we're considering, he can familiarize himself, and then we can, in the meantime, perhaps, uh, what's the fellow's name, I know you've mentioned it several times, the gentleman works out there.
Russell. Russell Radke.
Russell Radke, if he'll, if he'll start generating, uh, some information on when his, since we're open basically all the time, he can kind of get an idea of, like I say, mark the calendar, mark something, has, can be extremely simple, just something, the idea, if there's any pattern to when people come in.
And there is, the, the older gentleman, older gentleman ladies, they're, they're gonna come in Saturday at ten o'clock, Saturday at eleven, Thursday at ten, they will, but these contractors, different people that will come in here, it could be at any.
Well, I was gonna say, they, they, they may come in anytime, that was more when it was, they, well, you know, I, I understand that, you may have none, or you may have a bunch, but.
But you're kind of, you shouldn't have a commercial anymore.
No, I was gonna say, but that's, that's gone away, so.
So we, I mean, we should cut it in half for this year, but we won't know, maybe this is a good way to know what we're getting in the last couple of months, that way, then we can have an average to see how much we need for the dumpsters. If we're only gonna spend two thousand, we're gonna need twenty-four thousand, we're gonna spend four thousand a month, we're gonna need X amount, you know, it's a forty-eight.
After, after June, we should have three months that we could get a pretty good indication.
And, you know, and, and really, it's, uh, once you get all this stuff picked up, we don't have that excess, so we're managing what we got.
And I think Roden Bridge is good, because they're the ones that bring in the stuff, so they know exactly what we're doing, what they're doing.
You have talked to Russell about giving a report, whether he comes in here and physically gives it, or just turns it down.
Give it to you.
I've told him, I told Russell, I go, if you do this job, I go, if you're gonna do this job, and the commissioners' court's gonna be in charge of all of them, you're gonna come out and you're gonna stand in front of all of us, and I wanna report, and I've done blah, 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 I already told him about the roll offs, how many roll offs, and I told him, I kinda ran over with him, I said, are you okay, man? Because the gentleman that's out there right now, he's great, knows how to do the job and everything, he just gets nervous at all, so I told him, are you all right, man, I go, you're not gonna panic up there? And he goes, no, and he said, and he said, I'm, I'm fine, James, he goes, I've been up in front of crowds before, I go, yeah, I go, but we're pretty hostile. And I laugh, and he said, no, James, he goes, I'll be fine, and I said, okay, I go, because we're all gonna be drilling you, man.
Okay, so he needs to start that next Tuesday, when everybody gives reports.
Excuse me?
Does he have an email address?
He probably does, I'll get it from him, or if you wanna give him a call.
Is that what I can, um, send, send him a copy of the email address?
Okay. Shelby, do you know his email address?
Cuz, I don't, I don't think he's got it, he doesn't have an, a county email, I know that.
No, he doesn't, but we could set one up for him.
Or if he has a personal one, we can use the personal one for agendas and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We just.
I'm sure he does, but I just don't know what it is, I've never emailed him.
Well, he doesn't have a computer there anyway, so, he doesn't need one there.
But we could email him on his phone, I mean, he can get everything on his phone.
It was like, like David said, you've got a calendar, you just put down.
I mean, it would be real easy to print something out for him too, to keep track of that, there's all kinds of stuff that you can go online and just print it, you know, something to keep track of, how many dumpsters come in, how many, I mean, how many roll offs are taken out per month, cuz I don't think we're gonna.
You, you don't have much to do, you can make.
Because normally when they come pick up dumpsters, they need to pick up.
I have plenty to do, I do not need to make forms for anybody.
Two now is because of what we're doing.
Yeah, Shelby, there's not, if we're just retaining it to this right here, we're not gonna have a problem with, I mean, with the dumpsters, with the cost of them, so as of right now, we wanna just keep going with, uh, household stuff, right? Don't take no lumber, nothing else?
That's what they said.
So you get everything, anything commercial, you know, anything, commercials.
Okay, I know you had said, Shelby, that, and the reason is, cuz I was there earlier for a little while, and this gentleman came in, and he had, uh, some trash bags in the back of his truck, and since I was there, Russell pulled him over there too, man, and I knew the gentleman, his name's Reuben, and he said, hey, James, he goes, I got a trailer load for some number, and I said, you can't, you can't, you know, throw it in there, man. I said, but you know what, we have a meeting at one thirty, let me ask the other commissioners and the judge, I said, where did it come from, and he goes, uh, I said, I know you're not a carpenter or contractor, he said, no, James, he goes, I tore up some stuff at my house, he goes, and that's what it is.
That's, that's how acceptable.
And I said, okay, well, how much is it, and he goes, it's a, it's a, it's some, some of it on a sixteen foot big trailer, I don't know if it's a foot high, two foot high, I told him, I would ask y'all if that's acceptable, if it's from his home.
It's from his home, yeah.
Yeah, but how many people are gonna come and say that, not that he is, but I'm saying how many other people will say that.
Right, we don't know, what if, what if, I mean, I, I don't know.
Wouldn't that wait till the, till the bulky item?
He's not a contractor, but I don't know where it's from, but he said it was from his home.
But wouldn't that be wiser to wait until the, the bulk item pickup, or whatever that is?
We don't take it, we don't take lumber those days, we take his drugs, uh.
The one that the city does, though.
Yeah, if he's a ci, if he lives in the.
He's in the county.
Well, they may not be the contractor, but he could be the one, his house is being done.
Let me tell you, and really, when, when these people bring the stuff in, we need to verify their name, who they are, their address, so, you know, and then, and then, and you need to document exactly what they're bringing in.
We pull the, we pull their license plate number, and it's documented, if it's three bags, if it's brush, if it's whatever it is, it's written on the receipt, they got, we got everybody's license plate number, that's the way we've been doing it ever since Jeff, Jeff started running it.
But I, I think I'd get him, I'd verify, even if you see their driver's license, if they were an address.
I think there's a place in San Antonio, I don't know if they still do, but they used to make you show, like a water bill, or something that had your address on it and your name.
That's if it's within the city, that's like a, if a city was doing it, but since we're county, why?
Well, don't you wanna make sure they live in the county?
Well, of cour, of course.
I mean, what if they're coming from, you know, B, or Wilson?
They may, they may live in Port Lavaca, but have property here, and they come here on the weekends.
People do do that over there too, there's people that, that have came over, that, we know that they just got property here, but they go dump some stuff over there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's a.
But they do own property, they pay taxes here, so how?
Well, then let them bring a tax statement.
So you're saying just, don't allow anybody out of county to, and it has to be something within the county, that's something else that.
Or the rates are different for out of county people.
True. But I don't think, if it's somebody from B county, they'll go to Victoria, it's closer, somebody from Florida, they'll just go to San Antonio.
What do you charge them now?
But look at people from Nordheim, it's closer to come here than it would be.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
To go to Quora.
Well, no, that's a, that's a, there ain't about a split between Victoria and here now, maybe not.
I ain't gonna go to Victoria.
Well, and B bill's closer to here than Victoria.
They go by what's on the trailer, Russell, Russell goes by what's on the trailer, that Jesse used to do, and everybody, I've had work in there, they just go by, they just kinda eyeball it, it could be twenty bucks up to a hundred dollars, and it depends on what the material is too. So there's no giving.
Shouldn't there be, shouldn't there be set fees though, that are posted?
Well, there is set fees that are posted for trash bags, uh, for tires, for different stuff, but if it's a trailer, and it's full, and it's full of brush, and it got, you know, a little piece of number on this side, and it got, uh, a couch on that side, you just go by the bulk of the trailer and charge by the bulk of the trailer.
I quite frankly think if you're gonna charge for tires, you charge whatever these guys are taking, charging you.
I don't remember, but I think it's seven bucks there.
Well, I think if you're gonna bring a tire to the skirt, then bring in that tire, charge them whatever they're gonna charge at the.
But then you're defeating the purpose of the county road.
Yeah, that's true.
I was gonna say, you.
I think you should charge whatever it would cost them at discount tire, Beasley, wherever, to dispose of them.
Seven bucks.
I think Shelby, that's what it is, do you see the sign outside, I don't remember, I see it all the time, I don't.
I don't go into places, I have no idea. I dispose of mine, so.
Nothing to vote on today, James, so we just keep going to where we're going, Judge? We're, you know, we're overseeing it, so.
Only thing, we just, just, I don't think we need to, need to vote on this, but I think the vehicle just needs to be parked, because nobody else is taking a truck home or nothing like that, no.
Well, it's not like he's on call, on on-call position.
If he was on call, it'd be a different story.
Or law enforcement or anything else, that'd be different.
In this book, it's, it's got the, we can leave there for him to look at, it's got the rules and stuff.
Well, I, yeah, I, I think right now, it's more a touchy feely figure out what's gonna work, and everything else, I would like, personally, I would like to be able to recover the costs of handling the tires, but nothing else, because if you make it as expensive as, well, of course, if they go into a place like Beasley, or one of the tire places, they have an opportunity, but there are a lot of people don't go to those places, that, that's where your junk tires are coming from a lot of times. But anyway, that's, that's something else to be looked at without having to be dealt with today, but the fees for such as that, but I, I guess, from what I'm hearing, is if you're gonna go to strictly bagged trash, are you gonna take anything else, or what? That's what I got out of what they're saying here, we just.
I think, you know, it just basically comes, you want everything you bring, if you can, to be bagged, but if they're cleaning up stuff where there's, it's not in a bag, like lumber and stuff, that's understandable.
Okay.
But any household stuff they bring, like trash, you know, yes, it should be bagged, uh, you know, if you have, like, somebody may have a big party that weekend, they, or something, they got a big bag of trash, don't bring a barrel, and just dump the barrel in, cuz that, that's not gonna work.
No furniture, right?
We can take furniture.
You can take, okay, I didn't know.
Yeah, I would take, you take furniture, but have another dumpster for that, so that just, you can just.
Mash it.
Mash it down in there.
Beer bottles, right?
Shelby, most of these questions right here, like the number one, no sign, we're gonna have to ask, uh, Cameron, thinks no, we're gonna, we can ask Cameron, like you said, if, what exactly did you want us to stay on that? Not the hours of operation, that's us, but what do we accept of what we don't accept, so we can always fall back on him.
Yeah.
And the other one, Shelby, the second one, other waste materials other than bag, we can ask him, what can we be taking in right now, can we be taking anything besides bag trash, we can wait one week for that.
He'll tell you, probably, you know, you may, you may end up getting ten, so you can probably, he'll let you take a little commercial, but like ten percent of whatever.
So, well, anything commercial's gonna be a transfer station, so she's, it's gonna have to stick to residential, but on then, skipping number three, cuz I know we're not gonna have to mess with it, and number four, waste materials not being removed facility, from the facility on a weekly basis, not that, that exactly, cuz that was a complaint, but we can ask him, once we get it cleaned up, how are we gonna do it, biweekly, we can, we can ask him something like that.
And then, further down, the unsanitary practices, I'm assuming we have open top containers, do we not? Okay, how do you, how do you keep birds and such as that, now, people scavenging, I can understand, you just stop them from doing that?
But that stuff's in the ground, that's what they, that's where the birds were.
Oh, okay, okay, I was gonna say, are you gonna have to net the top of the container?
When they haul it, they do.
Well, I know they'd net it.
That's a, that's another thing, Judge, that me and Shelby talked about the metal situation, remember, I had asked you about the metal, that there is some kind of revenue generated from the metal, but like Shelby said, how can we charge the people for the metal, put it on a trailer, and then we go sell it, wouldn't that be kinda considered double dipping for the county, I don't know.
Go on, even if we had pulled one con, one container a week, and they charge us nine hundred dollars, that's forty-six thousand eighty here. It's just one container a week.
Handling fees, that you're just, you're, you're collecting, you're, you're collecting the money from the people who are putting it there, because they don't wanna deal with it, and then you're recycling and collecting that money.
Well, me and Shelby, what me and Shelby thought of was, maybe turning away the people that are bringing in metal, to them, hey, all you gotta do is go half a mile right there, and go, give it to them if you don't wanna sell it, or make three dollars, or two dollars, or a dollar, and like Shelby said, it's little pieces of metal that go in with the trash.
Throw it in the dumpster.
But we're talking about, uh, big old stoves and different kinds of metal, like we used to take, just tell them, go sell it right around the corner, get rid of it, and we just don't accept metal.
We, we won't accept any appliances.
Right, and we just won't.
Are you talking like baling wire and stuff like that?
If it goes wrapped up in the trash or something.
Throw it into.
Yeah, but if they come with bundles of it, you know how you pick up old stuff, and there's bundles of that?
They gotta go throw that, they gotta go to the.
Scrap iron.
Put the building a new fence, and they roll up the old wire.
You just direct them there.
Direct them there, yeah, and then you see.
And then they get money for it, so if they have an issue going around.
They'll be, be happy.
And then we don't get in trouble, in no way, somebody's gonna come out, hey, man, I went and dropped off a thousand pounds, you charged me, and then you went and made money, somebody's gonna bitch about it.
Well, I don't, I don't, I was gonna say, I don't have a problem.
You did for this job, and that's what it consists of.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, if they brought it willingly and paid for you to take it, they have ceded the, um, ownership to you, and.
Do what you want.
Do what you want to with it.
If you take, Judge, we can just get rid of it.
I tell you what the.
We and Shelby were just worried about it.
If there's enough scrap, real scrap generated.
So y'all don't get elected next time.
The, the, there are scrap iron. There are scrap iron places that'll bring you a free dumpster. You don't have to pay for it. And you just throw it in there. Kennedy had one sitting there from Monterey for, I bet, six, eight months. And, and they'll set them there, and you just fill it. When it's full, they'll come get it. And they probably don't give you full price for it, but you get something. I will caution you about one thing. Some places do not like wire because those things like Newell salvage made.
Yeah, it gets tangled up.
It tangles them, and they, I mean, they find wire and stuff and they just go ballistic. I, I've gotten to a point where we put it in vehicles and then crush them so they can't see it to get rid of it.
I think if you tell them about the scrap metal place and then they still don't want to go, then you take it and if you make money off of it, you make money.
That's what I say, in other words, if they, if they don't want to bother with it, just pitch it, we'll put it in that one over there from Monterey or from, uh, CMI or from whoever else. I, I don't have a dog in the fight as far as who, but most of those, most of those metal places will bring you something to put it in.
Okay, maybe we can get a dumpster that's directly from metal from one of these companies.
That's what I'm saying.
Get it up and then come and take it.
They're still gonna give you some money, but maybe not as much as if you took it yourself.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, good idea. Maybe we can do that. Have one roll-off that's special just for metal, but that somebody brought it. That's gonna come and get it.
Yeah, yeah, they'll, um, I mean, you could, I don't know who, I guess you could check with Johnny at Kennedy and see what their deal was with Monterey. And, and I've got the address or the phone number for Mr. Rogers at CMI.
Well, you know, you've got those three, what is it, three metal trailers that don't even have axles on them or nothing. I, you know, we oughta just crush those and haul them to the dump.
Scrap iron.
You know, have you looked at them? Maybe you could figure out something.
I have no idea what, I have no idea what they are.
They don't, look like a little one of them old cotton trailers. Open, there's three or four of them sitting there. They're just taking up space.
I'll go, I'll go look.
Maybe you'll purchase them.
There you go. Put them in, put them in, put them in a surplus auction.
Yeah. No, those, I think we'd never get those out of there.
Most of the, most of these, the complaints and everything, we got, we have a rebuttal, like going back to them and asking them, what can, what do we do? Today, we've already kind of figured out what we're gonna do today, right?
I think so. I mean, we're gonna go business as usual about cleaning things up. And the only real change until a man comes to talk to us, I think, is the, uh, going to no commercial, just strictly household. And if, if y'all want to continue to accept some, uh, what is considered household wood or stuff like that, I don't have a problem.
Yeah, uh, uh, that is not gonna be an issue. On toilets or something, you know, throw them, throw them in the, in the dumpster.
Okay, so if somebody comes in from their own house, but it's like one of those, how do we know it's not?
Russell just have to make, I mean, if they come once, it's fine. If they come three days in a row, you probably got a problem.
And that, and that statute, looking at book, it tells you that you can accept stuff from hotels because it is, it provides public housing.
Consider residential.
Yeah, consider, yeah, and you can take it, but they come in, they tear out much of their stuff, even though that you can still accept it.
And that's, that's commercial one hundred percent, but yeah, I know what you mean.
It specifically says in there, like remodeling or whatever of a hotel, you can take that construction.
Because they provide public, they provide a public necessity.
I remember reading that, too, in something the other day that we had, that part of that from the last.
The thing, all the motels and hotels here are on you, so we don't have to poll right now.
Well, I just want to be sure that we don't broaden the scope and then we get caught by somebody else.
Yeah.
But again, it's like I said, if it's out of sight, we're.
Yeah, but our luck, they'll start coming in and probing the trash to see what's underneath, what's on top that looks acceptable, and then they find something that shouldn't be there. Because it looks like they're red flagging us anyway.
A little, a little of it is going to have to be Russell and his associate making good decisions.
Yeah.
It's just like hauling scrap iron in. Uh, you go to a scrap iron dealer with a big load and they go around and they look and they look in and then if you're lucky, he gives you a price for a hundred. And, you know, if it's good, if you've got heavy iron, it's gonna be one thing. If you've got much tin, it's gonna be something else. If you've got wire in it, it's gonna be something else. I mean, uh, it's unfortunate, but a little bit of it's got to be judgment. You can't, in that instance, it's gonna be very difficult to reduce it to a rule, a hard and fast rule.
Other, other places are doing this all over the state. And this is, we're not reinventing the wheel.
No, I was gonna say, this is not unique to Carver County.
No, we need to make sure we understand what's going on and what else.
Yeah.
And they may be collection slash transfer station somewhere. I'm not sure. You know, I don't know. I doubt we're the only collection station in the state of Texas, but.
Tell me the difference between a transfer station.
Everybody around us are transfer stations.
They are.
Collection, transfer, and probably recycle station, but they got permits for transfer stations.
And, and, uh.
There are another different set of guidelines.
That's a, I was gonna say, a whole different set of rules, I think, from what I heard. Correct?
Yes.
As I say, I know, I see DeWitt County, Quero, they just have a dumpster, or they did have a dumpster parked there and they had a ramp up to it backed up to the thing and pitched it off in the dumpster, and I don't, you know.
Okay, guys.
Play on words.
I don't mind running up there and talking with Russell, okay? No truck. Minor house, whole trash remodeling, that's okay. To what limit? Little sixteen foot bed trailer?
If he's pulling a trailer with, yeah, sixty, if he's pulling a trailer that's got so-so Joe's Construction Company, then I don't, and this should be a automatic.
Flag.
Of course, no, no commercial, he already knows.
And verify, if they're bringing up the construction, ask them for their address. You know, verify their address, so we know that they're local people, or at least they're in the county.
Yeah, I was gonna say, asking for a driver's license is not, and, and, I mean, go ahead, I'm sorry, you first.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I started talking at the same time. What did y'all want to do exactly? Which, do you wanna, y'all wanna go in and ask him for a driver's license to make sure they're within the county?
I would write the thing down, yes.
I, I would get a driver's license now to say that they have to be within the county. I mean, we've got a lot of out of county residents that are, was mentioned that are property owners. And, and I don't think you can disenfranchise them. Uh, but I also don't think that we're gonna get covered up with people coming from another county coming here. But I think, I think a driver's license and the license plate number, that's what, that's what a scrapyard gets. I mean, when you sell anything, even if it's non-controversial, you gotta give them the driver's license and they put all that stuff in their log and, I mean, if he, that, we ain't there yet, but they take a copy of it. I mean, they take a picture of it to keep, not only about the people out here, but the big ones around San Antonio. Of course, they've got so much stuff, trouble with theft there, that, that's part of the issue there. If you sell copper, they really want to look at you, or used to.
Was the next, May tenth is the meeting?
Yes. What, what, what did you say? You wanna, go ahead and tell him that by May the tenth, he's gonna have to come and give us a report on this last week, whatever. What do y'all want on his report?
Well, he needs to give his report for the month of April, total dollars collected. Uh, you say he writes on all the receipts, which I've seen some of them, whether it's bagged trash or bulk trailers. If he can give a summary of five hundred and twenty-two bags of trash, three trailers of brush or whatever for the month.
I'm sure he can do that. He'll just have to do one of those. Well, but the thing is, right now, he would have to go back, since he hasn't been trained to do that right now, he's gonna have to go back and sit there probably a day to do all that research, and we're gonna use them on the es- excavator, so.
A day.
Or half a day, I don't know. I, I don't know how fast he is. I.
He, 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 he takes about a, about an hour, both of those, both of those.
You know what I mean, right? I don't want to take him away from what we're trying to do right now.
As long as we got those dumpsters over there that we're loading, he needs to stay there, because we're picking two a day.
That's what I'm saying. I don't want to kid him, I don't, and he may be able to do in half a day, three hours, but I don't want to take his time away from what we're concentrating on right now and put him back on April. I could ask him maybe on April, or I could tell him, start now, and if you got time, can you do your best, just give us a summary of what happened in April? As much as you can possibly get done by next week, could you please get done?
Yeah, but you had already told him earlier this month that he needed to start doing it.
Yeah, well, I did, well, I told him whenever we came and we met in Commissioner's Court, when he was gonna come out and he was actually gonna become the supervisor there. I didn't know if the vote the other day was gonna happen or not. They might have still left it under my, my authority.
Well, they still need to at least provide a report of the monies collected.
Okay, the money, the money's collected.
Yeah, that would be the least. That's, that's simple enough, and at the very least, he can, this is a new month, so next month he should be geared up.
I'm not trying to defend him. I'm just try, not trying to overmodulate.
Well, I understand that.
Given that at least the money's collected, it isn't gonna be a big deal because he gets a receipt every time he goes to the treasurer's office and turns it in, so all he has to do is add those up.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't really think we want to, any of that's a problem, but I'm gonna tell him, do as much as you can. This is what we want you to do. Compete as much as you can by Tuesday.
For sure, the money.
Okay, money for sure.
The number of dumpsters, that's simple.
Oh, yeah.
How many you did, and perhaps the rest of it can wait until the next month, even though he did have some forewarning, and he has a full report due for the month of May.
Okay, oh, but, okay, full report for sure for the month of May.
This month.
Now, how many times are we gonna have, what, what, one time a month?
Just out there, everybody else.
Just what you've been doing is things are so-and-so at the dump and.
Hello? Cameron, how are you? Is he gonna, does he need to follow some kind of page or something or just write it out?
Develop his own. He can develop his own, everybody.
Okay, you know, he's probably gonna, it's gonna be rough the first month or two, so I tell him. He figures out exactly what we're looking for.
Right.
Because he's not gonna hack everything. At the time that he's here, we're all gonna think of something different, but he'll go running as, as we go. Is there anything else that I, I'll, I'll throw him as much as we can, but I'll tell him, get as much ready as you can possibly.
Mandatory that he has the cash collections part.
The money's collected. That's number one. To Tuesday. Okay, and then, uh, number of dumpsters, number two.
That should be simple enough, yeah.
And then, you said, uh.
The other thing for next month, we want, want a summary of how many people per day, how many customers per day.
Well, he has to just get a calendar page like you suggested and tick marks for every person that brings in something.
That's for sure. I'm gonna tell them, if you can get it for April, I'm gonna tell them, if you can get it for April, we're right.
Okay.
But for sure, get it for May.
But for sure, get the money part for April.
When, okay, well, I know we're trying to bring them in on the tenth in the middle of the month, but the report normally is gonna be at the end of the month?
No, the report is always at the.
At the, at the beginning of the month, but.
For the month prior.
Next time's gonna be the second Tuesday of June to have a holiday. I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes.
He's got six weeks.
I was thinking, okay. Anything else that?
I think I, right now, we may come up with something else, so that's a part of things. Uh, you know, I think that's it for this minute.
What about, I don't know, he has hostile people that go in there all the time. Do you want us, you want him to report any kind of misconduct out there or something? Because people go in there and argue with him, but.
Well, I wouldn't say that's something he has to report to court. I would think it's something he would report to the sheriff's office or the city police department.
People give him a rough time because.
All the time.
You know, it's, uh, either it's like, it's after quitting time when you're here, or they bring stuff that's, you know, he can't handle. He can't handle, but it's just too heavy, and they get, they throw fits about that and, or, uh, or like when they're closed today, he has some come by and throw a fit at him because, well, they called and he said, no, we're, we're not open today. And, uh, and then they got, he said, well, thanks for being rude or something. They just, you know, I mean, sometimes a little vandalism out there or stuff.
The, the other thing that we might look at considering on the sign when it comes about is the clients or customers, whatever you want to term them, will unload.
That's what I was gonna ask right now. What do, do I, he's a nice guy. He goes over and helps.
I mean, there's nothing the matter with him helping, but it needs to be an option, not a requirement.
And also, nothing will receive after thirty minutes before close, quit in time.
Why don't you just say, if he quits at five, just say the thing closes at four thirty?
That's right, just set to four thirty.
And that would, he has time to push them out.
Last customer will be received at four thirty.
I mean, you don't have to, you don't, he, you don't have to put on the sign that he works till five. Just put on the sign that the, that it's open until four thirty, but he works till five.
Yeah, that's, that's it, and he work, you know.
Four thirty and twelve on site.
Whenever, whenever we get it set to exactly what the hours and days and everything are, the, like you say, you cut the clientele off a half hour early to let him take care of who, whomever's in there and fill his vehicles or equipment with fuel and do whatever paperwork he's got to get a little time, so he's ready. And you may want to do the same thing. We may want to do the same thing in the mornings. If he gets there at eight, it's not open until eight thirty.
Or nine or whatever, yeah.
Nine o'clock.
Yeah, but if he serviced everything in the afternoon before he leaves, he doesn't have anything to do in the morning, so I could accept that.
I, I realize that, but I mean, I'm. Uh, it's, the, a little wiggle room on both ends probably doesn't hurt. As long as it's not too much.
As a way of another, we don't have nothing written down that he can follow. I just have, I just have here a couple of, of things, a truck, no truck, a minor household of remodeling, no commercial. Of course, he knows that. FY for him, I'm gonna go ahead, FY, I'm gonna tell him that there's a possibility that Dale accepts it for the new year, to be planning to maybe, if he calls Dale or something, you know what I'm trying to say? For him to start rubbing elbows with Dale, because it's probably gonna be who he falls under that, not him, but that department. And then, uh, everything else that y'all told me, I got it written down here, what he's gonna have to have that day. And of course, you know that day, we're gonna think of other things, but.
Well, I know, and, and you explain to him that this is, we're still in a.
Progress.
Yeah, work in progress. We're still planning.
And I'm gonna tell him for intricate use, so, Lawna, for him to get us as much, uh, data as he can for the month of April. And I'll throw him this, this stuff out here, what the best he can do. If he gets us half of what I tell him, well, that's at least a start.
Sure.
He might get it all, you know, knowing, knowing Russell, but I'm gonna tell him. Russell, I go, don't go over there, man, and blow a whole day on this, man, and then you're gonna tell me you didn't fill those containers, man. And just, you know, I'm gonna tell him straight out.
That's, that's job one.
You go do the containers first. I go, we, we just threw this on you, you knew about it, but then, uh, oh, you, go ahead, Shelby, I'm sorry.
Well, no, but, you know, and he needs to make every effort to take care of all the other ancillary things around there. If something ain't working that we don't, we need to get fixed, like a lawnmower or a tractor or whatever, we, we need to, you know, make sure he's got the tools to do it, so he can't say, well, it's broke, I can't do it, or.
That's what my help does to me all the time. I couldn't fix it. I mean, couldn't go it, you know, my pickup was out of fuel.
Oh, and Judge, uh, Russell, the other day, when the excavator first got here, uh, I got one of my construction guys and I sent him out there to show Russell how to run the excavator and everything. Russ, uh, I was out of town, so I asked Shelby, he could please watch over everything, and he met one of my guys and all, and he, he think that they did well out there, right?
Does it have a thumb?
Yeah, it had, yeah, we got one with a thumb. Hell, yeah. So everything went good.
Now that I noticed the newest models come even with a hydraulic thumb on, not a fixed one.
This is hydraulic.
Huh? This one's got a hydraulic thumb? Ooh, upscale.
What am I doing?
Oh, quit complaining, being countered.
Sorry. Dollars matter.
Who did we lease it from?
Uh, the United Airlines.
It's good they have a presence in the county, so.
Yeah, I got most of the stuff here, Judge. I got a little talking muscle over here, and what time is it written?
I don't know. Three thirty, probably.
Probably gone.
Yeah, I'll catch him. Either I'll call him or I'll catch him first thing in the morning.
Well, just catch him first thing in the morning.
Okay.
Shelby, you're gonna have to get a new pair of glasses or quit running over those.
Yeah.
Why, what's wrong with it?
Look at him. Looked like, it looked like he had them on when Gretchen hit him inside the head.
After I read the, after I read the email, I wanna go from by, I threw the glasses against the wall.
Y'all want to adjourn before y'all discuss that?
So I don't know what's going on?
I, I don't know. It's just that it's not on the agenda.
Chicken.